Hello, good evening. We're gonna do an audio check, please, before the meeting starts. Mr. Demikov, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Cathcart. Hello, Mr. Cathcart.
I can hear you.
Thank you.
You need Carrie Wright yet, too.
Okay, we'll wait for Mrs. Wright. Ms. Wright? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion open public? Should we, uh, salute to flag, please? Everyone? Good evening, everyone, and my sincere apologies for keeping you waiting. Thank you for your patience. Do we have a motion open public session? Motion to open. A second?
A second.
Mr. Phytros. Mrs. McNeil.
Here.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Cathcart.
Here.
Mr. Gibbons.
Here.
Dr. Martinez.
Here.
Mr. Verselli.
Here.
Mr. Gomes.
Here.
Mrs. Orth.
Here.
President Fernandez.
Here.
Also present is Mr. Wayne Demikov, Ms. Carrie Wright, myself, Nancy Loyakono. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Ridgefield Park Board of Education caused has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bergen Record Municipal Building, Board of Education Offices, and the district website. Public, public participation will be conducted both in person and virtually through Zoom. All public will be muted throughout the meeting. Public participation comments are limited to five minutes. The public will be able to both speak and be seen by the board when participating virtually, telephonically, via Zoom. Individuals participating virtually that wish to make comments during the public participation will need to raise their hand by clicking the blue hand icon at the bottom of their Zoom window. Individuals participating by phone that wish to make comments during public participation will need to hit star nine on their telephone to raise their hand. The Business Administrator Board Secretary will then unmute individuals one at a time to speak in the order their hand was raised.
Seeing no minutes to approve, I'd like to move on to communications. Any communications? Committee reports, um, faculties and programs with, um, trustee Rodriguez.
The Faculty and Programs Committee met on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. All members were in attendance. We discussed the pre-K program and um, there were a lot of questions in terms of the selection process. And we just need a clear understanding, what is the process moving forward? Um, Dr. Acting Superintendent Dr. Hayes also discussed the resolutions on tonight's agenda. The subcommittee. So, um, we do have a subcommittee, um, the homeschool connection subcommittee. We did not meet as a committee, but, um, Laura Woods, who is a member of the committee, also Dr. Mercedes Haynes and myself. We were able to present at the back to school night and get the word out to the parents and all principals were welcoming, and we just want to thank them.
Thank you so much. Uh, subcommittees, social justice, Dr. Martinez.
Thank you. The general purposes, I'm sorry, the ju- social justice committee of the faculty and programs committee met on Tuesday, the thirteenth via Zoom. In attendance were Dr. Haynes, Dr. Ferraro, Jay Sean Sadler, parent, Nikki Shear, and Nancy Alken. The purpose, the general purpose of the meeting was to discuss the next steps in assuring the public that the administration is complying with the social justice policy resolution. To that end, after meeting, uh, for about an hour and a half, we proposed having a family night workshop on November first at seven PM via Zoom, or all parents are invited in a invitation will go out soon. During this meeting, we'll be revisiting the definition of the social justice in our schools. Uh, processing positive changes that have occurred in the past two years. Uh, we'll be hearing from administrators, teachers, and counselors about changes that they have seen in our school system. Uh, we'll be making sure that our learning community knows the rules and expectations of staff around these issues and how to give feedback when failures occur. Uh, towards the end of the meeting, we'll have a listening circle where we'll ask questions such as what is still needed in the district. Uh, what skills do we need to have, or our staff needs to have to effectively explore tough topics? How do we create a safe space with environmental practices such as pictures, flags, and representation? How do we value diversity in hiring practices or staff assignments? Creating a safe ritual space, for example, warm welcomes, asking people pronouns, preferred names, et cetera. And creating and identifying designated people in the district for kids and parents to go to when they need it.
Thank you so much. Buildings and grounds, trust, Cathcart.
The Buildings and Grounds Committee met, we discussed, uh, future plans for, uh, with the building that is going on in the community. We discussed projects that are being delayed due to lack of, uh, materials to complete them. And all the board members were sent a sure, uh, one-page review of the whole discussion.
Thank you so much. Uh, finance and insurance, uh, trustee Gomes.
The finance committee met this week, uh, we discussed, uh, the replacement of Lincoln ventilators. Uh, some of the units are here, uh, they're coming in and they're being stored, but would not be installed until next year. We also discussed the, um, HVAC, uh, for the auditorium in the cafeteria in the, in the high school. And also the culinary science remodeling rooms, uh, that would have to be another discussion with the architect. Uh, we also discussed, uh, LED lighting upgrades, um, and there was some discussion regarding possibly getting some grants for that, um, which the BEA will look into. Uh, the next thing we discussed was also, um, upgrading or or renovating the, uh, the courtyard, which is quite a mess right now. Um, it may be necessary to hire landscaper to clean it up for us. Uh, one thing we came up, uh, with was possibly maybe having it as an Eagle Scout project. Um, but we may have to do some cleaning up first before we give it to anyone. Uh, we also discussed a negative, uh, balances in the food accounts, um, some of which were going back on prior to COVID. Um, so the district is going to be writing off approximately twenty thousand there for, uh, the food costs. Um, the audit has not been completed, but it should be done, uh, in October or November of this year. Um, we're still waiting for, uh, some final journal entries. Um. The last thing we discussed was, uh, uh, possibly that the health insurance costs are going up, uh, it may be increasing by as much as twenty percent for next year.
Thank you, sir. Personnel, trustee Gibbons?
Yes, the personnel committee met on September twelfth. Uh, we discussed various, uh, new hires and positions, uh, that would be, uh, to be filled. Um, we also discussed, um, the loss and new hiring of paraprofessionals, which is a very common, um, issue throughout the county.
Thank you so much. Negotiations, trustee Verselli?
Uh, we're still, uh, in arbitration, RPEA, and, uh, the PSA, we are waiting, uh, another date. Uh, we didn't, uh, come to an agreement in the last meeting.
Policy, Dr. Martinez?
The policy committee met on the fifteenth of August via Zoom. In attendance were Barry Haynes, George Fernandez, Diane McNeil, Berlina Rodriguez, Michelle Orth, and myself. Actually, I'm sorry, Berlin, you were, you were at social justice as well, I'm sorry. Um, uh, topics covered included the use of facility forms and policy going forward. Specifically, we're creating two categories, um, uh, that we hope they'll be more equitable for the district. We're devising a new fee schedule and a reservation schedule that, uh, will be reasonable and fair to these organizations as well as to the taxpayers. Also discussed with the aim of increasing transparency and reaching a wider audience, one of my favorite things. Uh, continuing the Zoom meetings live, so they'll continue to be streamed, uh, recording and posting meetings on the RP website or YouTube channel. Uh, continuing prioritizing citizens' comments from those who are present. And increasing the public's knowledge of the chain of command and their contacts for child-specific questions and assuring that the district has quicker responses to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes our committee reports. Dr. Haynes?
Before we move on, I just wanted to recognize there is a new state law in place that requires student representation at Board of Education meetings. And tonight we have Gabriela Gutierrez, and I just wanted to recognize her. Thank you for coming. Thank you for participating. I always think that one of the great things about participating in social democracy is that our students get to learn, uh, and attend and listen uh, and think and reflect and bring some of these back to student discussions. So thank you for being with us. We promise we will let you go soon because we know you have a huge homework load. I will continue with the superintendent report in a couple of minutes, but first back to President Fernandez.
Yes, I'm just jumping a little bit out over for the sake of time. I'd like to move on to the state monitors report.
Yes. Uh, I do not have any updated figures in regard to the legal fees that resulted from the action taken by the board, more specifically, the pending litigation with Dr. Bender. The total fees remain eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and sixty-five cents as of September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. At this time, I want to introduce Mr. Scott Henry from the Department of Education, who will address the board and the public. Mr. Henry, please come to the microphone.
Um. Uh, thank you, Wayne, for that, uh, kind introduction. Um, President Fernandez, Dr. Haynes, and members of the Ridgefield Park, uh, Board of Education. First of all, I would like to thank you for allowing me to come here, uh, this evening to discuss the status of the state monitor here in Ridgefield Park. Um, as Wayne said, I am a representative of the Department of Education. I am the director of the Office of, uh, Fiscal Policy and Planning, and I also oversee the Office of State Monitors. Um, the Commissioner of Education has seen fit to review the, uh, the state auditor. The state auditor assignments, and in an effort to better align state auditor skillsets and and experience with, uh, district needs. Um, a decision has been made to reassign Mr. Wayne, uh, Demikov to the Lindhurst Board of Education and reassign Mr. Thomas Egan to the Ridgefield Park Board of Education effective October first, two thousand twenty-two. We expect that all the good work that the board has completed with the assistance of Mr. Demikov will, will, will continue under Mr. Egan's tenure. The Department of Education is committed to providing Ridgefield Park, as well as all districts in the state of New Jersey, the resources necessary to be to, 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 to be successful. So we would anticipate it with that Mr. Regan would Mr. Eagle will experience the, the level of cooperation that Mr. uh, Demikov ha- has received, and we look forward to the day that we can move Ridgefield Park out of state monitor status. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Henry, for your time.
Um. At this time, should we introduce Mr. Egan? I'm sorry, I am remiss. I should introduce Mr. Thomas Egan. Tom, if you'd like to say, uh, if you'd like to stand up. We'll be seeing much more Mr. Egan shortly.
Welcome to the district on October first, Mr. Egan. Um, I can, does that conclude our monitors report, Mr. Demikov?
Yes, it does.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent, acting superintendent's report.
So just a couple of points with the superintendent report for tonight. Is it, Simone, could you get the thumbnails out of the way? Is that you, or? Thanks so much. Awesome. The first thing I'd like to share, which is required by law, are the number of students who graduated last year, and I'm proud to present, and this has to do with our high school administration and leaders and counseling department. But we had a hundred percent graduation. It was a really difficult year because we were in the middle of the pandemic, and so the state, um, allowed different kinds of graduation pathways. And I'm actually going to read the top grid here. The number of students graduated under the substitute competency test progress. Students in the class of twenty twenty-two only had one testing pathway, and that was the park in ninth grade. We did not offer the PSAT in tenth grade, and there was no state testing in the tenth, in their tenth or eleventh grade. So many students took, uh, a replacement test, the seventy-six of them passed with the ASPAB, the Armed Services Test, and forty-five, the College Board Test for Accuplacer. We also had thirty-two students who were not required to place because of IEPs. Still, a hundred percent of our students graduating last year is an accomplishment that I again want to celebrate for our high school administrative team. Second. This not only has to do with our high school administrative team, but administrators all around the district who pulled together in a difficult year last year. This represents the good work of the board, the support in programs and initiatives that the board puts into place and supports. The way that they support our staff, our administrators, and our stakeholders, because this was also parent input. This required the entire village. And when the entire village pulled together last year, we passed QSET, and these are the final audit reports. Most of these numbers you can see are phenomenally good, such as governance at a hundred percent. Operations and personnel, we know we have some room for improvement. Fiscal management, obviously, that should be good at ninety-five percent. And instruction and program, when I looked at these numbers originally, I was a little disappointed. I mean, eighty percent is what you need to get. But when I dug down a little more, that fifteen percent is solely due to, uh, the testing. And the testing comes from our twenty eighteen, nineteen NJ SLA results. So they're looking back three or four years. They're saying that our students could be performing better on tests, but we passed everything else. I will say, the curriculum that they reviewed at the same time passed a hundred percent. So I'm, again, really proud. There were so many teachers who went through QSET curriculum revisions. There were so many supervisors who participated at that, and administrators who all pulled together to give us these results. And as a village, I think we should all be very proud. Please. And the last thing, this surprised me. I didn't find out till about two days ago. Uh, but many of you know from attending previous meetings that we applied for one of the PEA grants in the state to offer universal pre-K or to start that as a seed program in our district. Uh, this first year, we did win the grant. And for those of you who have lots of questions, if you wanted to ask those a public comment, I'll go ahead and say, uh, Ms. Diane Thiemann, who's in charge of that program and actually present in the audience tonight. She will be presenting all about the program at our October board meeting because there's a quick turnaround time, and she'll get to present a lot of what has happened, what's brought us here to date, as we have to open our first fifteen-student classroom on October fourth and how we move forward to the program. Um, she shared a lot of those exciting ideas with me as we move forward to the grant. But what was amazing to me is, as you look, we were the only district in all of Bergen County that received two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to start this year. And when Mr. Martinez started applauding a minute ago, this deserves a great deal of applause, too. As I said, I keep it short because Gabriela has homework to do. That is the end of my superintendent report.
Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Haynes. At this time, I'd like to open up the podium for citizens' comments on agenda items.
Before we go to on-agenda items, I want to make sure that there, there is a resolution revision for item thirteen oh-four. Resolve that the Board of Education, and I, as I read this, I want to say, this is being revised due to a great deal of input on from many different sources. I'm going to leave it there. Resolve that the Board of Education on the recommendation of the School Business Administrator and Acting Superintendent of Schools that the employment of the following employee is hereby placed on unpaid leave. Thirteen oh-four is revised to read. Resolve that the Board of Education on the recommendation of the School Business Administrator and the Acting Superintendent of Schools that the employment of the following employee is hereby placed on unpaid leave.
Good evening. Before we begin public comment, as the Chair of the Policy Committee, I want to remind everyone that we believe it's crucial to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. The board is here to listen. However, the public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, the board may respond to easier questions tonight or may not respond to questions tonight, depending on the level of research needed to answer the question. It's because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, expect that Dr. Haynes or relevant staff member will get back to you. I also want to point out that under the state and federal privacy laws, the board is unable to respond to comments related to school personnel or students. Please know, however, that we take personnel and student concerns very seriously. On these matters, we ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels, such as your school principal, the administrator in charge, or that department, or Dr. Haynes. We want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we'll insist that all speakers and members of the audience address their comments to the board president directly rather than the audience. Finally, I want to remind everyone that the board administration is reachable by email. For tonight's meeting, there will be two public comment sessions, one on agenda and one off agenda items. There's a sign-up sheet at the podium, or actually in the back table. We will call your name in the order that you sign in. Each member of the public will have five minutes to speak during each comment period. Time cannot be transferred to other individuals. The public comment period will be one hour on agenda items and one hour for non-agenda items. The board will now entertain public comment. Please remember to state your name, Ridgefield Park mailing address, and keep your comments brief to allow sufficient time for other members of the public to speak if they wish. Thank you for your cooperation.
Christina Ramos.
Good evening, Ms. Ramos. How are you?
Christina Ramos, three H two Teneck Road. I'm still trying to get used to reading this new agenda format. So I believe it's number eleven, Resolutions Finance and Insurance. And it's, do I pronounce it, do I say by the subject?
You could.
Eleven sixteen?
It'll be FI eleven.
I'm sorry, not eleven, what is it, eleven sixteen? No, eleven fifteen. No, sorry, not that one. Hold on. Actually, it is eleven oh eight, Pre-K Inclusion Program.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this a separate program that will be running in addition to the co-op pre-K?
Can you ask the question differently?
Is the pre-K inclusion program where families are paying two hundred per student per month, is this separate program from the running, from the other program that's going to be at the co-op?
Yes. So again, I would ask Diane Thiemann to respond to that for a response, and we will get back to you as soon as I have time to confer with her.
Okay. The, okay, eleven ten, Grant Reward Acceptance of the Preschool Education Expansion. How many staff members are you required to have?
I'm sorry, the number again, Ms. Ramos?
How many staff members are you required to have in the program?
Thank. Right. Again, I'd rather have Ms. Thiemann respond accurately to that question.
Okay, so how much will the program cost in total to run?
So the program, if we are talking about the PEA grant program and the fifteen students, it is self-sufficient because we got two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the state that pays to run that program.
So will this grant money that we receive cover the full program? Or will it be borrowing money from somewhere else from our district budget?
The program itself, the fifteen students, that two hundred and thirty-five goes to pay for the teacher, the supervisor of that program at the site, the materials, the classroom, the upgrades, the renovations, it goes to pay for those fifteen students at that site.
Any rent?
The two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars pays for the fifteen students at that program at that site.
That's going to cover everything.
Going to cover.
The entire program.
It's going to cover the entire program. Again, I would say.
So the district will not have to cover any of this expense?
For the fifteen students at that site? No.
Why is there supposed to be any other students anywhere else? You said that site, as if there was another.
We do run many pre-K programs. Again, I'd ask you to.
Sorry to interrupt you, but specifically, this grant is covering only the co-op pre-K.
That is correct.
And it's sufficient to cover all expenses?
Correct.
Okay, subject eleven sixteen. I see there is expenses to buy, supplies to buy from IGA. Why are we using IGA? Anyone who lives in town knows that's like a quick stop shop, kind of, they're kind of expensive. So why aren't we shopping around? And what exactly kind of the supplies are we purchasing from IGA for eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, I'm assuming that's the culinary program for foods, and I would have to get back to you to confirm that.
Okay. I had one other question. I'm paid leave, no. Okay, now this one is sorry, thirteen oh nine, Employment of Truant Officer, Liaison Coordinator. Why do we need this position?
For many reasons. This is a, this is a position that was in our district previously. And there's a recognition here that some of our students who are chronically absent, meaning not present in school for ten or more days, need more assistance. Many times, their families need more education, and what that means potentially for not being successful in high school. This person also handles registration and is the registrar to make sure that people live in Ridgefield Park and follow up physically by checking license plates and registrations and other things. We do not currently, and we do not support the district as well as we could because we do not have this person.
We should have been following this. We've been saying this for a long time, that we have a lot of students coming to our school that do not belong in our district. As far as being a liaison between parents, I thought that's what the guidance counselors do between students, teachers, and parents. It just sounds like another made-up position to me.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
I have one more question. Do I still have time?
You can go forward.
And Mr. Talon, for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for a grant writer, it is unheard of to have a grant writer at that full-time grant writer. Why are we hiring a full-time grant writer? Are benefits included within the salary? When was this position posted? How many people were interviewed for this? Was there a committee? Was there any opposition from the board to create this position? When Haynes was hired, this was supposed to be part of his job responsibility. I hope the community is taking notice of how financially irresponsible and reckless you are being with our district's money.
Give your comments, Mrs. Ramos.
So we know there were many questions about the district grants coordinator, and I have this response. While in any given year, our district receives about five hundred thousand dollars in ESAA title funds, like many other school districts, in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-three, we are now receiving about six point five million dollars in pandemic relief funds, which we have never received before, and which we currently do not have, nor did we ever have the capacity or a person to plan, supervise, reallocate, and report back to the state on these funds. It was never in any job position before. Many surrounding school districts have hired a grant writer for this specific reason, for these pandemic funds, but this staff member does not write for new grants. They are required by the existing ESAR and ARP grants to spend time specifically on the existing six point five million dollars. Otherwise, without appropriate supervision of these funds, the state may deny or take back the money.
Just to clarify, Dr. Haynes, this position will not write grants, just manage the existing grants that we have. Because there was a misconception by a few board members.
Yeah, this position does not write grants. They manage the six point five million dollars of grants that we are receiving. And additionally, their salary is paid from grant funds.
Jay Sean Sadler.
Good evening, sir. Hi, good evening. So Jay Sean Sadler, one thirty-nine Overpack Avenue. So I'd like to speak on item number thirteen twenty-one, the C R R S A slash E S S E R slash A R P program, which it says, you know, is supporting mental health through ELA and visual and performing arts. That's one. The second item is eleven point two three, the BLSS Supervision Alternative Program, which it says is therapeutic support for students and families. And lastly, the item number thirteen point zero eight, the Appointment of Social Worker, Ms. Ava Codrich. I'd just like to acknowledge that these are things that I see as, you know, positive, and I'm very appreciative for them. I think that supporting the mental health of our children is, it's impossible to overstate how critical that is. If you don't feel mentally safe and secure, you can't learn. You can't have the positive outcomes we all seek to achieve for our children here in this school district. So I want to thank you guys for that. I think this is a positive step in the right direction, and I'd like to encourage the board and all of our administrators to continue this work in supporting our children's mental health. I'd like to thank, you know, Dr. Haynes and Ms. Cavens in particular. I had an opportunity to meet with both of them over the summer and discuss concerns regarding, you know, mental health issues. And both of them have, you know, followed up on the measures we discussed, so I'm appreciative of that, and I hope that work continues. I will definitely give credit where it's due, and when things don't happen, I'll definitely be here to try to hold you all accountable. So please keep that up. Also want to acknowledge the work that we did with the Social Justice Committee, which I appreciated participating in that, and I look forward to continuing to participate with that as well. Think it's very important work. It is regrettable that it kind of fell off for a good long while, but again, I want to give credit where it's due and hold folks accountable when the work isn't happening. And I hope that, you know, we'll produce things that are not just performative, things that we can kind of pat ourselves on the back and, you know, talk, talk, we have to walk the walk as well. So that's all I have for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your words. Kind words, sir.
Janet Malou.
Good evening, Ms. Malou. How are you?
Good evening. Janet Malou, one sixty-three East Grand Avenue. First of all, I'm rather disappointed that the person from this state actually got up and left and didn't really hang out to hear some of our comments. Would have been nice, maybe give him a sense, better sense of what we're really about. And I personally am sad to see that they're pulling Wayne, Mr. Demakoff, because I think he worked very hard. And I don't really, I think when you switch people mid-year, so to speak, or midterm before something is fixed, I don't know. I have my doubts. Truant Officer. I, now that we have a new truant officer, I totally hope that this district considers re, I don't know really what the word is right now, but re-signing everybody up. In other words, we are, re-registration, thank you for the word, that we re-register everybody in this district. Because even if we find fifteen or twenty that do not belong here, that's fifteen or twenty that should not be if they're not truly living in district. With the building that's going on in this community, our numbers are going to go up. I don't believe what the builders are telling us that, oh, no, they're not. You know, we're going to make it so that they can't have extra kids, you know, have a kid in a a one-plus bedroom type of deal. So I think that's one thing that we really need to consider. Tonight, my main thing is really this grants coordinator. I understand the need for a grants coordinator, but I wonder how many of you have actually looked at this person you have listed here. I researched him. His background is primarily pre-K. And if you read it, it says that it started from a family business. And he basically is the, was the executive director of this family business called Alan Jean, Inc. that had up, was licensed for up to a hundred and twenty-three students. Then that changed over, and it was a nonprofit called the Netherlands Academy. He's the CEO, the president, the executive director of nineteen employees plus administrator, assistant administrator. Then he's involved in Cooling Waters Academy, which again is an infant through K. It employs six to ten people. So where is this background grant coordinator for a district this size? I don't see where the eligibility is. Sounds to me like we're just bringing on another administrator that eventually is going to very easily be slid in to run the pre-K program that you want to imply. The other thing is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, I don't care whether it's a grant or we're paying it. If you look at what most grant writers are making, they're nowhere near this. And a lot of them work off of a base salary and a percentage or just a percentage. Off of one of the sites I looked at, they said the range in salaries typically thirty-eight thousand to eighty thousand. And the eighty thousand is for places like New York City, LA, Seattle. So what are we doing? I'm very skeptical about this position. And if, and it was supposedly for two years. And somebody asked how long it was. It was, I think, twenty-six days on, on the, a couple of places where it was advertised. And I will be the first person down here screaming if this guy is put into the position that you currently have Diane Thiemann working in. Because as I see this, and I'm very cynical at this point with what I've seen go on in the past few years here, and my opinion has not changed. If she is ousted for this person, then you have really destroyed this district. And just mark my words. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Susan DeSantis.
Susan DeSantis, fifteen Homestead Place.
Good evening, miss. How are you?
What?
Good evening, miss. How are you?
Fine. How are you? Resolution thirteen oh four. I would like to know what this person did to be placed on unpaid leave. I think that the public has a right to know. I think the public knows exactly who this is, and I mean, what are the accusations that are being made that this person would be sent home on unpaid leave? Was there an endangerment of children? You know, parents have a right to know. It's a question.
We don't comment on personnel issues.
So you're not going to tell the parents whether their children were endangered in any way or anything like that? That's very interesting, Dr. Banks.
Mrs. Wright, would you like to weigh in on that?
The board is not permitted to discuss personnel matter. So if there are, if there is information that is permissible to be shared with parents or with the public, we certainly will let the board know that. But at this point in time, there's no information on this particular agenda item that can be shared with the public.
Didn't the Supreme Court just rule that you can't use personnel to hide things like this? 1309 Employment of the Truant Officer. My understanding that this is for a friend of Mr. Gibbons from football on the class of 96. What, what are his qualifications for this? The district grants coordinator, from what I saw, this person, the only, the only thing on his, on his LinkedIn is he ran a pre-K. He's not even involved in the public school system, you know, a pre-K that from his family. Mr. Demakoff, could you give me Dr. Bender's figures again?
The total number is 89,990 dollars and 65 cents. And that includes billing that we have through really July. It doesn't, I don't have any August figures for, as of, as of this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Ed DeSantis.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Just want to start with something I've mentioned in the past is that the public comes here with questions. And to say someone's going to answer them in the future after you already go on them is absurd. Not everybody wants an email. When people make the time to come here or zoom in and there is nothing on this agenda, the president, the board superintendent, and most board members shouldn't be able to answer off the top of their head. If you can't, then you shouldn't vote on it. Okay, and resolution 9, 9.09. We have a revised bylaw and policy as to what a quorum of the board is. What is that? You don't have to be nervous. What is a revised?
This isn't a Q and A, sir. I guess you're not part of hearing what our instructions are when you come up to the podium.
I know you're not going to answer. A quorum of the board is a quorum of the board. The board can't change that rule.
Is, is this state stature? Is that what's going on here?
No, this is not a required mandate.
Right. It's a, it's a Strauss Esme revision to the bylaw on quorums.
The quorum should be the same, correct?
There is a slight change to the quorum.
What is it?
I would rather than even try to quote it from memory, I'd ask it, and I'd inform the public.
If you can't photo from memory, that's a shame. So don't take my time to.
Please answer. The public should know this, though. All policies and regulations that govern this governing body are available at our website at rpps.net. And if you look there, you can look up all of the board policies and you'll see the revisions also. I think that's good public information. That's what governs our work.
And you just saying what it is would be better public information for whatever 100 and somehow people are listening. Resolution 1108, pre-K Inclusions Program. I see we have seven students that are paying 200 a month. That's a, that's a nice deal for the parents. That's a, that's a nice thing. It's not going to add much to paying for the program. Which brings me to the grant award person you hired or hiring. Hasn't been a grant writer. Is going to be a grant monitor, a clerical position. At 138,000 dollars a year with no experience. And you, do you think, may not answer, is that a reasonable thing to do? Because all 138,000 dollars means coming out of a grant to pay for them is 138,000 that won't get used for what the grant is for. Shame on you. Now, as far as the the resolution, it's a terrible setup, the agenda. 1110 Grant Award Acceptance. 235,000 dollars given to the program. Dr. Haynes, you had said this, this wasn't going to cost the district anything. Is the 235,000 is going to the district? Were we reimbursing the partner for their expenses?
That's correct. I was very clear that for the 15 students at that partner site, the 235,000 goes to reimburse that program. That's correct.
So it won't pay for Mrs. Thieman's salary?
Mrs. Thieman is already on our payroll and you are correct.
So you lied. You lied to the public. You lied again tonight.
Go ahead, go ahead, miss.
That's a poor example to our students, Dr. Haynes. Shame on you. And you lied to this community, including a woman who was on there, and you assured her that the entire grant was covering the program. You can put it a fancy way, but that's just your personality. Finally, last but certainly not least, the termination of employment. Which you're revising now to a unpaid leave. Obviously something serious enough that it's causing a major change. I do think names can be redacted, that that report should be made public. If this name is redacted, there's no harm to the teacher. And as my wife has said, the Supreme Court has already ruled that in cases of termination, where there may be certain reasons for it, that you can't hide behind personnel. You're not going to answer that question either, are you? Is it just answering, not answering anybody?
As a former board member, is this a personnel issue?
No.
No?
No. As a former board member, if, if the name is redacted, we can speak about the offense. And the Supreme Court has ruled also.
Thank you for your lesson.
I'm not done. And the truant officer, family resource coordinator, I do agree we need another truant officer back. That would be a very good idea. And any other comments I have, I'll make off agenda. Thank you.
Thomas Blumenthal.
Thomas Blumenthal, 55 Tineck Road. I wasn't going to mention this, but it seems pretty embarrassing to me that you can't explain what a quorum revision is. Most of the people who are here tonight know what a quorum is. And the fact that you can't explain it in a few simple words should be embarrassing to you. And it is. Resolution 13.04. You may not be able to mention names, but I can. Robert Kilmari has been a cancer in this district since he came into it. He was brought in under suspicious circumstances. I know on my own that he was not properly licensed when he came in, that his reports were delinquent to the state. And that only when that was brought to the attention of the public did he ever converse with the state and try and bring his reports up to date. This is a person who has been corrupt from the day that he came into the district. He was corrupt in the bus service. He's corrupt with regard to the daycare center. He has no regard for this district. He refused to have monitors on the buses so that it would be possible to keep track of where they are. He refused to keep proper records so that his performance could be evaluated. He would use his own personal time in the district, using district supplies without any authorization whatsoever. The idea that you've taken a termination and turned it into a leave, that's a joke. The majority of this board is a joke. And the sooner you get out of here, the better.
John Rafferty.
Good evening, sir.
Took the night off from work. I wasn't going to talk because I'm so upset after seeing RBA get up in tears and walk out the room. I don't know what people are thinking. We have lost one of the smartest, most credible men I know in our state monitor, Wayne. Recovered almost $4 million for our town and received nothing but grief from the Board of Education. Wayne from the people of Ridgefield Park, thank you and good luck. We had, we had RBA today who stood strong through the,
can you just?
Who stood strong through the transportation audit.
Excuse me, I think we lost connection.
We, we lost connection with our Zoom meeting.
I'm off the air.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, I do karaoke. I know the screen goes out.
Is the other TV still on? Okay, okay. Mr. Raftery, you can still go. I'm so sorry. We just lost it on this end.
All right. Whatever, Ms. Grabstein walked out in tears. The transportation order was obviously presented to the board. Ms. Grabstein tried extensively to get information from Mr. Kilmari. She was denied. I am wondering if anybody ever explained to Mr. Kilmari that he answers to Ms. Grabstein. Can anyone answer that? Can anybody answer that? Dr. Haynes, do you know if Mr. Kilmari was aware of the fact that he answered Ms. Grabstein? And when she requested private logs, license IDs, trip sheets, et cetera, that he was to provide that immediately? You don't know. Nobody knows. Nobody knows anything, right? We'll give you more money. We have a lady who cared deeply about her job, the students, and the function of the Board of Education. We've lost her. We have a state monitor who cared deeply about our town and went out of his way. We've lost her. Mr. Frey, your comments to Carrie Flackstein, we're out of order. Can I find you? It would be a disgrace.
Leslie Gottlieb. Leslie Gottlieb, 464A Liberty Street, Little Ferry. Leslie Gottlieb, Little Ferry, 464A Liberty Street, Little Ferry. First question, an easy one. I saw that you put up the graduation rate for this year. I've never seen this presented before at a board meeting. Is there a history of graduation rates that one keeps? I mean, it looks great. It's 100% with the pandemic and everything else. But I'm curious if it's been constant or if we'd had ups and downs over the years.
I, I love this question. I looked at this years. I think it bears interest in looking at previous years. So let me get that information for you. Yes.
Okay, now the next question. In resolution 1304, although you can't say the name, most people here know who it is. This, because this person's been placed on leave, some people may be concerned because he has another job, another function with both Little Ferry and Ridgefield Park that does involve children. And some parents rightly may be concerned because this person does work with the aftercare. So maybe something needs to be said to the parents, at least that there was not anything of endangerment to kids with his being put on leave. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Just wanted to say to the public that, I'd like to remind you, the public, that should you be mindful that the statements you make on the board employees are maybe subject to you being legally liable for slander.
Donna Doran.
Good evening, miss.
Good evening. Donna Doran, 16 Sabina Street, Little Ferry. My question is resolution 1109, payoff negative meal account balances. Can some, I would assume I would have to, you would have to address it to the BA because that is the BA function.
Yes. So what had happened during the 2021, 2022 year, as discussed in our Finance and Insurance Committee, that certain kids went, their balances went negative individually and collectively that amounted to 18,000. And as a committee, we voted to unanimously to cover that expense out of our, what would you say that unpaid amount would be?
Yes. So what happened is because everyone was getting free lunches last year, these accounts were actually held from, from prior year. And because they were still on the books, we decided to clear it up and just write it off. And this year going forward, we're now making sure they stay on top of it.
Okay, let me just ask a couple of questions concerning that. I would assume that you have the company called Pay For It with the lunch program? Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm very well versed with Pay For It. When a child has an outstanding balance, Pay For It generates the letter to the parent. There's been a number of letters that have been sent out. I would hope so. This is a lot of money, just basically to, to pick it up. And the monitor approved this? Cause we, he questions every time we spend money. So the monitor approved to pay the 18,000.
He was present in a meeting. He didn't voice any opposition.
I didn't hear you what?
He was present in the finance committee meeting and he didn't voice any opposition to this.
Okay. There was an accountant on staff, correct? You have an accountant on staff? You have an accountant on staff, correct?
Like, for payroll purposes, I believe.
Just payroll purposes?
Have a business administrator. And we have an assistant business administrator.
Okay, but you do have an accountant on staff, correct? Yes, that'll be my other question. Wayne was off agenda. I'm not happy with, with the 18,000. I would really like to know how many Pay For It letters went out and who basically tried to do it. That is a business office function. Lunch comes out of the business office. You have a BA, you have an assistant BA, okay? And I'm sure you have somebody in charge of lunch, which they do the lunch form. And I'm sure you have somebody in charge of lunch, which they do the lunch forms. You have two people. It's a lot of money just to write off. And I understand that there were outstanding balances, but that was outstanding balances that incurred the previous year. So I don't understand how you can close out and then still have an outstanding balance. That is going to be, I would assume, a huge audit hit.
Thank you for your comments.
Andrea Melendez.
Good evening, miss.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Melendez. I lived in Ridgefield Park for 15 years, and I currently live on 160 Franklin Street in Little Ferry. This is in regards to Resolution 1304 unpaid leave. My son Christopher has autism. And he attends Academy 360 in Caldwell and Livingston for the last seven years, which Ridgefield Park provides transportation to. Everyone is using his name, so I guess I will too. I'm not quite sure what is going on with Mr. Kilmarie, but I'm here tonight to inform the board and anyone else who would benefit from knowing that as a parent of a special needs child, the transportation and the guidance and supervision of Bob Kilmarie has always, always been safe. There has never been one instance where I was concerned, uninformed, or worried about the transportation, safety, and well-being of my son. And coming from a parent with special needs, this is a big, big statement, and probably something you're not going to hear very often in regards to transportation. Additionally, Bob Kilmarie has always gone above and beyond from after-school programs and recommending other special need programs to my son and my family. And if I may share just one specific example, my son, who happens to be a really good swimmer, earned a spot to swim and participate in the Special Olympics of New Jersey and happened to win three gold medals. And learning of this, Bob Kilmarie arranged for my son, who doesn't even attend Ridgefield Park High School, to be included in the sports award ceremony. He was honored with a trophy and given a standing ovation. I don't think I've ever seen my son so proud, and was all due to the efforts of Bob Kilmarie. To even question the integrity, dedication, and the utmost safety that this bus coordinator has provided to students every day is absurd. The peace of mind that he has given my family is simply invaluable, and if he was here, I would thank him. Ironically, the only time I've had issues with safety of my son and lack of communication has been this past week. When not only there was no bus on Monday morning, there was zero communication, and my son was almost left home alone. I was then advised at 2:00 PM on Monday that there would be no bus to pick up my son in Livingston at 3:00 PM. You can imagine the panic that I had in trying to figure out how I was going to get him. On top of that, I was advised that there would be no bus to school for my son with an I E P to Livingston for their foreseeable future. After sending an email requesting an explanation and assistance, I received a very self-serving canned email from the business administrator for my apologizing for my inconvenience and that safety of the students was first and foremost, which made no sense to me. The safety and well-being of my son has not been displayed in any way, nor has it been since, as I'm still waiting for a bus for my son. To date, my only option is to either take off of work or to keep him out of school. And I'm sure I speak for many parents when I say what has transpired this week is unacceptable, unprofessional, and irresponsible. And we need a solution to transportation yesterday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Maria Gleisi.
Ms. Gleisi, is she still present? Kalesi? Let's promote then. Yeah, let's promote. I believe we have about 15, 20 minutes. Good evening. How are you?
Hi, this is Maria Gessi.
Yes, is your address?
To Hudson Avenue. I am a parent of a special needs child, and I just want to say that regarding the bus coordinator, Bob Kilmarie, same thing as the person before, I would trust my children with him. He's been busing busing my daughter for almost 10 years, and I haven't had an issue. I haven't felt unsafe. And I report to the situation he's in right now. Thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
Hi, this is Sharon Ramirez, 205 Overpack Avenue. I just had a couple of questions going back to this grant coordinator position that we are having. $138,000 is very concerning for our district. And I'm very confused as to why we had to remove the middle school principal, saying that we didn't have funds for that, but yet we have funds for a grant coordinator at more money than what the middle school principal was making. So this, and we're having her run a program now that is is seems to be very up in the air. I really appreciate Janet Malul and her research on this person that you are considering. And I agree with her. I feel that this is very underhanded, especially how the superintendent has been running things in this district, and I believe that we are trying to push out Mrs. Thiemann, which is really going to cause a lot more upset than it already has caused in removing her from the middle school position. I don't understand why 138,000, why this is even a price. I know people who work for towns where the grant coordinator is only making around 30,000 that towns will hire and bigger school districts will hire companies to do this position. And you have somebody who works for you as a company, and you're paying 30,000, and we're paying 100,000 more than that. Is this a benefited position? Does this person get benefits? Is this like a full-time benefited position? Because this isn't a full-time position. And 138,000 is is completely ridiculous, considering that we removed an administrator from the middle school because of funds that needed to be transferred to a pre-K program. And now we're hiring another administrator. This is, it's very confusing to me. So does anybody have a, is it a benefited position?
Good evening, Mrs. Wonder Ramirez. Yes, it is a benefited position. And it is a full-time position because of everything that is entailed in spending 6.5 million dollars. Or, as I said, if we can't prove to the state auditors that we used it for what we said we were going to use it for, what the state says we're going to use it for, we could easily lose it. The state would take it back. Many of the programs that are on the agenda tonight and many of the programs that we've approved in the past, such as the credit recovery, the enrichment learning this summer, all the Meadowlands, everything that's going on now, the art enrichment, the mental health, the social worker, that full-time position. There are B S I teachers. All of those programs are going to be under the purview now of the grants coordinator, not writer, coordinator, to ensure that when the auditors come in, we can prove that we've used the time sheets, the professionals in the district, such as teachers' times for after-school, for high dosage tutoring, for all of those other programs that are currently helping our kids in post-pandemic times. That's what this person is hired for.
So who's been who's been allocating those funds prior to this position? Who's been in charge of those funds?
There's only one person in this district who does that and is also the Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
So this is again proving that we we kept to hire more people because you have too many jobs in this district. So this is, so that if you would, if you would still be your Director of Curriculum instead of superintendent and all these other positions you have, then we would not need this position of 138,000.
I think there is a recognition that there are too many tasks and too much workload on one individual.
I I agree, and but I do not think that, so we thought that it wasn't okay to keep other positions because there was no money, and now all of a sudden we have money for a position that I don't feel is necessary. I think that this is something that we can look into, especially since that it is not, to me, it is still not a full-time position. It is not something that we should be paying benefits into, but thank you for answering my questions.
I I'd like to add just a little bit. Mr. Demikov did work position also. This eliminates a certain stipend that's currently paid for out of district funds and shifts district funds back to grants that the district is not responsible for. But as I reported a few minutes ago on the N J S L A testing, that our students could be performing better for state standards, that money also comes to us for learning loss. So the programs that we put into place to help our teachers with professional development of using Linkit and looking at student scores and making individual decisions that meet each and every student's learning plan. That's all the purview of this one individual to coordinate that work with principals, small groups of teachers, individualized learning, to dig down and look at.
Well, that doesn't sound like grant grant coordinator. That sounds like administrator or data, data coordinator. That sounds, so maybe this this job position is mistitled. And that's also very concerning. Because a grant coordinator would not be doing in the way it's written, that does, that sounds more like an administration job, something that would administration for data or implementation or something that a curriculum director should be doing. But so this, are was this like basically an assistant, another assistant to you? Because this is what this sounds like. This does not sound like a grant coordinator. I and I'm 100% with you that these programs are necessary, important, and great that our district has them. But a grant coordinator is going to be working hands-on with teachers and staff and looking through data, then that's not a grant coordinator.
As defined by the CHRISA grant and the A R P grant, that is what that person does.
So this is going to be, so so they're getting, we're getting grant money for this position. This is coming out of the six point whatever million dollars.
That's exactly right. I, because it's difficult in this forum to go ahead and break out the requirements that the state and the federal government has on that 6.5 million dollars. It comes to us in certain containers that we are obligated to follow. And if we don't follow those containers or those guidelines, as I said, they could take it back. I'd love to.
Is this just the Ridgefield, wait, so this is just a Ridgefield Park requirement of Ridgefield that state has for Ridgefield Park because we have a state monitor?
Not at all.
Because I did speak to other districts about this, and they never heard of some such position. In fact, when I was explaining this position and showing them the the on our agenda, other boards in New Jersey that are right around us were a little shocked that we were even hiring this position. Because I I did my research as well and finding out why was this necessary? And then after you said that it was state required, I actually reached out to the people on the board, and they said they've never heard of something like this. So maybe that's something that we can discuss at another time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Please feel free to make an appointment with me so we can look at the grants together.
Good evening. How are you?
Hi there. My name is Denise Santana. I live in 101 Hobart Street. I just wanted to also share that I am the mother of medically complex child. And I would like to say how Mr. Bob Kilmarie, who has been already mentioned in the meeting, has done a very good job ensuring that my son receives his busing. I have heard stories from today's meeting and other parents, but I I have to say that I have felt safe having him in charge of my son's busing. So I just wanted to put it out there that, in my opinion, he has done a very good job taking care of my son. And as a mother, which many of us are here or are caregiver, that brings me peace because when you are a parent of a child who cannot defend themselves like a typical child, there are a magnitude of stressors that come with that life, and to know that at least for this portion of my journey being Josiah's caregiver, I don't have to stress over that is very comforting. So I'm I'm saddened to hear what is happening with Mr. Kilmarie. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Ingrid Raftery, 54 Euclid.
Good evening, miss. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you, except I'm very upset that Mr. Wayne Demikov is all of a suddenly being exchanged. I'm not sure why, and I don't think that was answered. Also, I understand the parents who have children with special needs, but since nobody really said why Mr. Kilmarie was is on unpaid leave here, I don't think it has anything to do with that. It, I think it would be fair if the transportation audit would be made public, so parents understand. Also, I'm, no disrespect, Dr. Haynes, but here we're paying a lot of money for Dr. Bender to sit at home, where she could come back. And you're going back to your former position as the curriculum person. And I think we could save a lot of money instead of hiring and really just shoveling all these new positions around. And every time I look, there is a new person that comes into our district. Somebody else gets replaced, then we do not have money for this. We don't have money for that. And I I think it's it's a shame, actually. So in all fairness, I will say, let's bring Dr. Bender back. And then you can go back to your old position, and a lot of money could be saved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, I'd like to close public comment on agenda items and move on to resolutions. The moving on to faculties and programs, trustee Rodriguez.
I so move and, excuse me, I so move nine oh one through nine, 10.
Second. Second.
Any comments or questions on 9.01 through 9.10 faculty and program?
I have a question on 9.10, the job description for the truant officer. The terms of employment say hours to be determined. Can we modify that to specify that this is a full-time position?
Sure, we can. We can put that in the revisions, full-time position. I believe it says 10 months also, correct?
I'm not certain. I don't have that up in front of me.
I do. Hours.
Did you mean hours of the day to be determined?
Correct, hours of the day. I want to be very clear about this too, because it goes back to the nature of this position. This person could be knocking on families' houses after hours to make sure that the parents are educated in their obligation to make sure their children are in school. So these So uh, these hours are to be determined based on the day.
Thank you for your comment.
And I think, um, Dr. Haynes, the other call out that we had and, and was the um, periodic reregistration of students was supposed to be one of the lines as well.
Thank you for your comment. Um, per discussion with, uh, Dr. Haynes, these will be revised in the minutes.
Mr. Phytros? Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes, but I'll be the extension on 905.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to buildings and grounds, trustee Cathcart.
I move 10.01.
Second.
Any questions or comments on buildings and grounds 10.1? Seeing none. Mr. Phytros? Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to finance and insurance, trustee Gomes.
I so move FI 1101 to FI 1124.
Second.
Any questions or comments on finance and insurance 11.01 through 11.24?
I have a comment on 11.10. Um, I've been a vocal in my criticism of the way this program has been planned and communicated to both the public and the board. And while I stand by my criticisms, I will say that today I had the privilege of meeting with Ms. Seaman and Dr. Haynes regarding the program. I asked some challenging and pointed questions, as is usually my style, all of which were answered in a straightforward and in my opinion, honest manner. I had asked the public to be patient and give them the opportunity to answer your questions as well at our October meeting. As I believe that the only reason for the delay in that presentation is because there was too much business for this evening. In the meantime, I think it's appropriate to welcome the co-op to the Richfield Park School District and look forward to a productive relationship with them.
Mr. Phytros? Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes, I'll be an extension on 1104 and 1105.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to consent agenda, trustee O'Neill.
McNeil, but um, I move 1201, use of facilities on the consent agenda, please.
Any questions or comments on consent 12.01?
Okay, so I'm going to be the squeaky wheel tonight. Um, on 1201, use of facilities, item four. It's missing any request for dates. I don't see how we can approve this broad request for the use of our facilities with no start date, no end date, no missing half the information, especially as this is a for-profit organization and we are in the process of revamping our policy on this matter. But I'd move that that be amended. To, to amend the item to only include the first three use of facilities, taking the fourth one off. I second the motion to amend.
You would like to table it? Or, or just to amend it?
I, I'd like to amend it to take off four, where we go back to the organization and say we need more specific information.
Thank you for clarifying.
And I'll second that.
Second in by Miss. Yep, we, we'd like to vote on the amending the resolution 12.01.
Voting on the amended resolution 12.01. To amend it. Mr. Phytros?
I'm an abstention.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Are we talking about the section four, the use of the gym by the fire, fire basketball pending availability? Is that the one we're talking about?
Correct.
No.
Mr. Gibbons?
But yes, so that we could have a date, uh, for that fourth item that, that seems to be missing. Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes, uh, these deets definitely need to be posted on here. So we'll add it back when the deets are posted for the availability. Yep.
Motion passed to amend. Motion to approve consent agenda 12.01 amended. Mr. Phytros?
Stay.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to personnel, trustee Gibbons.
Yes, before I move agenda items, um, after listening to the public and several board members, uh, questions, I'd like to table 1310, grants coordinator position.
I'll second that.
Mr. Phytros?
Before we vote to table, can I ask? I, I haven't received a job description for this position. I don't know, it was supposed to be an attachment on the last meeting, but I didn't receive the attachment and it's not on the district website, so I don't know if that job description exists. I wasn't able to, because of the technical difficulties with Zoom, um, I wasn't able to join the public session last time, so I don't know if that ever got entered or.
Part of the concern too, so we could have a discussion and table this now, um, so that we could discuss exactly the job description and the questions we have, any questions the public might have about this position as well?
So we approved the job description, but we didn't actually get the job description. Okay, I just wanted to make certain.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, in front of me on my computer, I have the job description. But you never. Oh. Got it. Okay.
Great, and I wasn't able to join the public session. I was only in executive session last time because of the technical, ugh, technical difficulties with Zoom. So I don't know if it's just me that didn't get the job description or if the entire board didn't get the job description.
The, so I will go back, I'm, I am confused myself. The job description went out. That's when we had approval to post for the position. We had an interview committee. We interviewed four candidates at length. Uh, this was a week's worth of process based on the job description, so I am confused. Um, let me check into that. I, I did not hear about that before the meeting.
I think I just realized it. I'm sorry.
Voting to table?
Motion to table 13.10. Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Can I ask, before I vote, can I ask, i- is there a consequence to us delaying this hire? Because the reason that I was planning to go for it was because I was told that a lot of this funding depends on this position. And, and, and with the understanding that you can't do three positions and that this position, this monies, these monies that we got, which are time limited for two years, two more years, I think, or one year, two years, that, um, these monies require a lot more maintenance and a lot more documentation, uh, in order for us to keep them. Uh, so can I ask, are we in danger of losing that if we?
Yes. I almost want to bring Ms. Lacona into this conversation because she and I have daily conversations about time sheets that go to unbudgeted uh, dollar amounts because the money hasn't been reallocated because there's nobody to do that. Uh, and those accounts are in arrears and it's a daily occurrence because this needs a lot of oversight. When the auditor comes in, yes, they are very likely to say this hasn't been managed according to the grant and take away millions of dollars. For example, two millions of those dollars go to pay for the HVAC at the high school. So all of the classrooms, this auditorium and the cafeteria are all paid for by grants. The Lincoln upgrades that are currently happening are paid for by grants in addition to all of the other programs that I mentioned. The state can always come in and say, these weren't reallocated or spent the, the way they were supposed to and they can take the money away. Yes.
And for the record, I know that, you know, when I saw, I, I do remember seeing the job description, I think it was in our meeting. Uh, but I was, I, I did have sticker shock when I saw the amount and I, and I did call you about that. And, and I don't think it's a, it's, it's not an insult to you that you can't do two and a half jobs or three jobs. These are some of the consequences of actions that were taken last year that have trickled down into this moment and it's no reflection on you, Dr. Haynes.
I, I agree, but I mean, you look at the salary, this is more than most of the principals in this district make. Um, it's more than the BA and little furry makes that manages 25 million dollars worth or more worth of a uh, a district. I mean, it's a lot of money to manage 6.5 million dollars. I mean, it's more than, you know, what the assistant BA makes here, which is on that, which is in today's agenda. It's a lot of money. It's a hundred and 38,000 dollars. You're walking in. It's more than people have been here for 10, 15 years, administrators here. It's a lot of money.
And.
And I, I mean, it's, let's just call it what it is. It's a lot of money.
I agree. I'm not, not disagreeing with that, Mr. Phytros. I'm agreeing that in the discussions that I had with Mr. Demakoff uh, and Mrs. Grabstein at the time, we came in, uh, around the principal amount of money and then had to consider health benefits. So, yes.
And it, and it's more, it's, 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 it's much, it's more than those folks.
And Dr. Martinez, if I can add.
Greater certifications and so forth.
Just for clarification, this position is a temporary position until the grants end. So it's, it's not a permanent position.
It's, it's not even a two-year position anymore because we're into this year. It's a one-year and nine-month position.
Is that going to be pre-lated?
No.
And why, why can't he write grants also?
Because the money is being allocated for administrative expenses that are determined by the grants. So a certain portion of this salary comes from the ESSR funds. That portion has to go to spending those ESSR funds. A certain portion of his salary comes, his or her salary comes from the ARP funds. That person had, because the auditor will come in and ask for the time sheets of this person and where they allocated their time uh, in administering the grants. It's very specific.
What is the timing of when they're going to come in to look at the, the allocation of the funds?
Ms. Ms. Lacona, would I ask you to, do you mind weighing in on that? Cause you have experience with ESSR funds and auditing of, uh, ESEA funds? The auditing of ESA, ESEA funds, which will be very similar to ESSR and are just the timing of the auditor when they come in and look at those funds.
I apologize, but your question is when would this person start?
No, my question is at what point do we anticipate the audit of these grants? So to Dr. Martinez's point, if we delay on filling the position, do we have enough time for them to actually do the job?
At any point in time, the, forgive me if I'm saying this incorrectly, Dr. Haynes, is it the, the DOE that runs, the DOE, the state that runs these funds can ask for information at any time. As you progress through the grant, spend the money, decide you need to reallocate and amend, they, the procedure to make an amendment and prove everything you want to amend is very lengthy and it can take months. As it is, one of the amendments has not been approved since June. Multiple revisions are required and in that time, how do you manage all the details when you're still waiting for an amendment?
Can I ask a question? Uh, Mr. Demakoff, you're still my, uh, state monitor. And with that, I will ask you, do you think it's a good idea for us to approve this position today?
Well, it's not taking any funds out of the local monies. That's the positive part of this, but there, you do need someone to manage this. If you think that this amount is too. If you think that this amount is too high, uh that's one thing, but you certainly need somebody to manage this uh allocation because the state can come in at any time and, and if you haven't done it correctly, uh take money back from you. So you, there is a risk here. Uh if you don't think this is the right person, or, I mean, I, I was not involved in the selection of the individual per se, but if you think that this is the wrong thing to do, then you should vote it down. I mean, you, you risking the allocation of that money though by delaying too long, I don't know what too long is.
We could save twenty grand maybe by lowering his salary and getting somebody else, but we could lose how much?
I, that, that would depend, I can't give you a figure on that, how much you might lose.
More than twenty thousand?
It's hard to say, you, you really don't know, it depends on what, what the grant looks like and how it's been allocated and what the state comes in and says about it. So there's no way of really knowing what the amount is at risk. Could you get somebody cheaper? Maybe, it may take longer, it may take three, six months, who knows? I mean, they did a uh uh interview process, I, I wasn't part of that, but I mean, they did do a uh interview process. And if this is their choice, he would not come for less. And if you don't want to pay it, then you have to get someone else and take the risk. It's really your call.
You said the position was for a year and nine months? Is that covered all in the one thirty-eight or is it one thirty-eight a year? Is it one thirty-eight for twenty-one months?
It's one thirty-eight per year, so these grants are broken up. We have ESEA money right now, but what's called Esser two or Chrisa sunsets in September twenty twenty-three. So when we proposed this and tried to run this, um it was in the summer, but we've already eaten three months out of this year. So one year from now, Chrisa Esser two expires. Um one year after that, the ARP Esser three expires. So this person's salary, the one thirty, it comes out of Chrisa Esser two till September of next year. And then from September to twenty twenty-four, twenty, sorry. Yes, twenty twenty-four, when the next one, the ARP expires, the salary comes out of that grant.
Okay, but I'll also point out to our trustees that um and, and I, given some of the things that happened in executive session, um our, our finance department might be a little compromised right now.
I, I just have a question because the debate came mid-vote. So do we have the opportunity to reset the vote?
I believe we're awaiting Dr. Martinez's tabling vote.
You'd have to vote on the motion that was made and seconded.
I'll vote no on the motion.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is I've already cast my vote before we had.
You can make a motion to untable it.
Order was out of order.
So let's make a motion to untable it, it would be. Yeah. Yeah, we do have to finish that vote, so.
Uh no.
Mr. Verselli, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Mr. Gomes?
No.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
I'm a no.
Motion passes to table, six yes, four no.
Chris, personnel?
Apologize, new agenda, let's see. I so move thirteen oh one to thirteen oh two, is that correct? With the new agenda, I just want to make sure. Thirteen twenty-two, so that's thirteen oh one to thirteen twenty-two, yes. Excluding thirteen ten.
Any questions or comments on thirteen point oh one to thirteen point two-two, except for thirteen point ten? Seeing none, Mr. Phytros?
Yes, to all, except the extensions of thirteen oh eight, thirteen thirteen, thirteen fifteen, and that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
This is on personnel, right, thirteen, thirteen twenty-two?
Yes.
I am a yes to all, except thirteen oh four. Uh based on a report that I've, I've access to. I was not comfortable with that decision to amend that resolution.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes, but thirteen oh four, I just say that we need to act quick to get somebody in charge here. As you've seen that we totally had no plan and we left kids, we're talking about safety, we left kids out on the street with nobody picking up, so we need to act and get somebody in charge.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes, but I'll be the extension on thirteen seventeen.
Thank you. President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mrs. Laikola, before you move on, in regard to resolution, uh the amended or revised thirteen oh four of a statement to make. As a state monitor, I am legally mandated to oversee the fiscal management and expenditures of the school district funds and to oversee all district staffing, including the ability to hire, promote and terminate employees as stated in NJSA eighteen A colon seven A dash fifty-five, section B. As a result of discussions with the acting superintendent and the business administrator and my review of the relevant report and in accordance with the authority granted to a state monitor pursuant to title eighteen A colon seven A dash fifty-five, I hereby overturn the action of the board to approve the revised and amended Personnel Resolution thirteen oh four and hereby terminate the employment of ID four three six three effective immediately. That, that will go in the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, moving on to citizen, I'd like to move on to citizens' comments off agenda items.
Well, while we set that up, can I just, um, I didn't get to say it before, and the, the timing is a little awkward, but I just wanted to thank the state monitor for all his work for this district all these years. Uh the state monitor and I have, have not been friends, we've bumped heads many times. And he's, as you know, not a very warm and fuzzy guy, at least not on the screen. Uh but I think we grew to respect each other and I do respect the, the work that he did in this district. I, I think what he did was pretty amazing and worked much harder and did much more than he needed to do to keep his position. At no point did I ever see a decision made that I felt was based on anything but was better, was good for the district. And so I just want to thank you for your service.
Christina Ramos?
Good evening, Ms. Ramos, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Um. I was hoping that the state would have stayed behind to hear some of the comments being made by the community, but I'm hoping that they'll be able to review this video at a later time. With that said, it is, in my opinion, from attending board meetings for the past several years, that Mr. Demakoff's presence here has been the best thing that could have happened to our district. And I do not know, I do not want to see him go. I don't know where we would be standing or standing at all if Mr. Demakoff had not been here throughout the years. The previous board members, the previous board members throughout the years and some of our current sitting board members have mangled our district with one bad decision after another. First, they decided to terminate our superintendent, Dr. Angela Bender, without reason. Then they sent back an advance payment over interest-free loan to the state in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars despite the input of the community who were opposed to sending this money back early. We have three pending litigations with Dr. Bender, Ms. Demon and with Little Ferry, which is costing this district a fortune in legal fees, money that we can be using towards our schools and students. This district can't afford any more financial burdens. This will take a toll on this district, community, but most importantly, our students, who always end up with the short end of the stick. Mr. Demakoff, in the years he has been with us, has managed to recuperate the district three point seven million dollars. Unlike former and current board, board members, Mr. Dermotokov has not turned a blind eye to all the wrongdoing that they try to pull over him. And because of this, they wanted him gone. They dispose of anyone that gets in their way, anyone that does not play along. This is how they operate. I've said this before and I will say this again. What I've been seeing here in a school is a school board abuse of power and they need to be stopped. Board members who are willing to go through extreme lengths without hesitation or care in the world of how their decisions can affect the students and taxpayers of this town. I have witnessed years of mismanagement and I won't stand on the sideline letting these people destroy our district. You, you will see me at this podium time and time again until I see an honest and transparent board who care about our students' education and nothing more. What is about Mr. De, what about Mr. Demakoff that bothers them? What is getting a new state monitor assigned going to accomplish? Are we getting a discount? What shady deals are being made? It doesn't make sense that after seven long years, Mr. Demakoff is removed. He knows our district well and replacing him is just setting us back with someone who is unfamiliar with the people and how our district run. Many of the community members have written several letters to the state about no confidence in regards to some of our board members and the decisions being made. What did our board members tell the state that was more believable as to what is going on here in our district more than what the concerned parents and taxpayers had to say? Why weren't our letters and pleas for help ever get answered? Suddenly, a call to a powerful senator on the Education Committee is made and poof, Mr. Denofkoff is gone. Something is very wrong and the people of RP need to wake up and take notice of all the dirty deeds going on. Nobody cares about the students. Nobody is calling up the senator to ask him to help us provide better education for our students. They are spending all their energy to get rid of the state monitor. They are working hard, all right, but they are not working for the taxpayer or students of this district. You have elected and entrusted these board members who have failed us and now you must take them out. The upcoming election is right around the corner. Do this district a favor and bid farewell to Mr. Gibbons, Fernandez and Verselli. Help us get one step closer to achieving an honest, competent and transparent board this district so desperately needs. Good night.
Jay Sean Sadler?
Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening, good evening again. Uh do I have to repeat my addressing? Okay, so uh I, I intended when I was up here before to also thank Mr. Demakoff uh for his service to our community. Um I think that, you know, the, the few times that I did uh either disagree or I didn't understand a particular action or decision that Mr. Demakoff made, uh the one thing I can say is that I always trusted that he acted in good faith. And that means a lot. Um I really appreciated that fact, I, I unfortunately, I can't say the same uh for our board. Uh but I could say that about Mr. Demakoff, um I, I felt that he acted in good faith. I, I could trust that even if I didn't understand or agree with whatever action he took, he was doing it because he felt it was best uh. From what I observed also, I felt that he was, he, he was professional um in the way that he addressed us as a community. Um he responded to our questions, he was responsive, and I very much appreciated that. So, Mr. Demakoff, thank you so much. Uh I appreciate you and I wish you uh all the best of luck in your future endeavors, thank you.
Uh, thank you for your coming.
Absolutely, Mr. Demakoff, thank you. Uh I'd also like to say that those qualities, um as I listen to my fellow community members talk this evening, uh one, I think, underlying um thing that I see is there's just a lack of trust. I feel like there's a lack of trust uh, you know, amongst us, between the community and uh the board. And I feel like this is something that we have to repair. We cannot do the work that we need to do for our children if we don't have trust. Um it's, it's debilitating. And I feel like we spend a lot of time on things that um are not an optimal use of our energies instead of doing what we need to do to provide the best possible district we can for our children. Uh, you know, with, with, with that in mind, um I, I did want to acknowledge just my own personal experience of some, you know, minor um improvements that I've seen in my interactions with folks. Mr. Fernandez, I'd like to thank you. I frequently fundamentally disagree with some of the positions you've taken, but I appreciate the fact that you could speak to me as a human being about something that, you know, we didn't have the same understanding of. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that, I appreciate that, and I think that that goes a long way. And we need more of that. Thank you. Same for Mr. Verselli, I had an opportunity to, to meet over the summer and talk to Mr. Verselli, who I've publicly disagreed with, and I appreciate the fact that there was some humility shown and we could, could talk through different things, whether we agree, disagree. Um I respect and appreciate that, Mr. Verselli. Uh I wish that.
Thank you.
More folks could do the same. Um, the other thing, I, I haven't had an opportunity to speak here since August and there, I did have some experiences in August that I did want to bring to your attention. So I, I think you all are aware that myself and Mrs. Ramos brought some ethics charges against Mr. Christopher Gibbons uh for uh his uh not uh adhering to the duties agreed um to, to him, for him um to be performed in his function as a volunteer with the football team. Uh it was regrettable that in, in um bringing these concerns uh to your attention, Mr. Gibbons uh responded um by attacking, you know, myself and uh Mrs. Ramos. Uh his attacks were reminiscent for me, I, I can say, as a, you know, a black man in this country growing up uh and having people clutch their purses sometimes uh when I'd walk by or I'd enter an elevator or hearing door, door, door locks click uh when I walk by, you know, just having my own presence uh criminalized. Um, Mr. Gibbons' actions were reminiscent of those things for me. You know, and I'd like to say that, you know, him uh likening our uh attempts to hold him accountable uh to, to a school, you know, school shootings. It's reprehensible, it's completely absurd. Uh and despite these things, uh this past August, I'd like you all to know that, you know, I, I, I spend time on the track every summer, I'm out there every morning, rain or shine, I'm out there running. And uh, you know, I've seen a football team come out and I see Mr. Gibbons out there once again doing the same exact thing that he did the year prior, operating outside of the agreed-upon uh limits of his duties. He's there in a full defensive uh stance, coaching of defense on the field. Right? And then he uh, you know, speaks to his lawyer um and says, like, my presence, just my presence, right, is in and of itself an act of harassment to him, which I find, um actually, I experienced that as, as racist. Right? A, a racist act, that's how I experienced that. And yes, Mr. Gibbons, um I'd like to say to you publicly, you can, normally when I, I speak, he goes and he tells his lawyer or he calls the police or whatever it is, you can tell your lawyer, you can call the police, I'm here, I'm gonna say the same thing because it is my truth, it is my experience and I want you to know that your actions and your words, they cause harm. They don't break me, they don't stop me from doing what I'm doing, but they're reprehensible, um they're deeply offensive. And I look forward to voting against you in this coming election so that we can have some people with integrity to hold that important seat of board trustee. Um we can't have someone there who lies and who violates our trust sitting in that seat. Thank you so much, have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Susan DeSantis.
Good evening, Mr. Santis.
Well, first, I'd like to say, um, my understanding is that Pete Kraljik was on the football field coaching during a game. I'd like to know what he was doing there. He's not an employee of this district, he's not a coach. What he was doing there?
But not to me.
No idea. As to Mr. Demakoff, that man has been here protecting this district for seven years from a group of people, employees, your benefactors, the ones that recruit you and pay for your elections, and will, has recruited you and certainly is paying for your election this time, I would imagine. I'm sure you're very un- upset that one of them has been terminated tonight. Um, I, I, I've seen this group try to get to risk, rid of, uh, Mr. Demakoff for, for many, many, many years, and it goes on and on and on and on. And now, you've managed to do it in cooperation with your little ferry connect, network, connection. Um, I think you should be ashamed of yourself. I think what you're doing is appalling. I find it interesting, before this happened, I said it at a cou- a couple, uh, meetings ago, exactly what was going on. And obviously, tonight, it's true. There was a administrator, a little fairy administrator, drunk at a Giants game bragging how Mr. Demakoff and actually you, Mr. Haynes, were gonna be gone in October. Mr. Gibbons is running around the district before all this and saying, oh, Bobby's gonna be reinstated on Wednesday, and Mr. Demakoff's gonna be gone, and Mr. Egan's coming in, is gonna take over, and he's Tommy Kraljik's friend. Well, I have news for you. This district has had enough. I told you before, we're fighting a different battle than you. We're fighting for the education of the kids, not your little corrupt network. And we will put a stop to it. I think you think that, you know, Mr. Egan's gonna come in, and he's gonna do all the, the nonsense that you want, like you did by trying to get rid of Dr. Bender. It's not going to happen. This community is done with it. We have to wait until November and then January, but it's going to happen. We're done. Understand it. And we will fight to keep Mr. De- Demakoff here or, or get him back. We're done with it. Thank you.
Ed DeSantis.
Ed DeSantis, fifteen Homestead Place.
Good evening.
Seems, good evening. Seems the matter when I sit down and think about what I'm gonna come back and say, you managed to do something that has me start off on a different comment. You say this isn't a question and answer period, but depending on who asked the question, and if it's something you can feel comfortable with, you'll answer it. And if you don't like the person, or you have some prejudice against them, you won't answer the question and smirk. I see that smirk. I hope everybody online saw it too. You're incompetent.
Keep your comment.
So, but that's your problem, and hopefully this community realizes that, Spirit, you will won't belong here anymore.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm not done.
So thanking you for your comment.
So anyway, what I want to talk about is where this board goes from here. We got an election coming up, and I hope this community realizes how much the wool's been pulled over their eyes. Your election campaign was about transparency and communication. You lied. Seems lying, hiding, lack of transparency, dishonest answers, avoiding answers are what this board does, and I feel sorry for the board members that have to be painted with the picture of the board. On a much more important note, and I have time, some words about Mr. Demakoff, who unfairly, how it happened, however it happened, is being removed from this district. He's been here a long time. My experience with him as a board member and board president was that Mr. Demakoff was integral in writing this district, riding the ship. I found him to be strong, want to do the right thing, always be open to explain his decisions and hear you out. I never felt, even as a board president, that the monitor was my boss, but rather part of a team that wanted to make this district better. He's a man that doesn't like things that happen behind the scenes. He's a man right out front. When he makes a decision, if it's not liked, he'll take, he'll take the heat. He's an honorable man. He doesn't hide. I can't tell you enough words that as a board president and board member, what a pleasure it was to work with Mr. Demakoff and see how much he cared about Ridgefield Park, its students, its staff, and its community. And I got to think, knowing everything about him I do, and I will be forever grateful for all his help, is that if you can't get along with him, it's you, not him.
Janet Malul.
Good evening, Ms. Malul. How are you?
Janet Malul, one sixty-three East Grant Avenue. Lots of thoughts keep going through my mind as I'm looking at where we're headed. And one of the things that's become obvious to me between where we've been and where we're going is the lack of planning ahead. When you remove Dr. Bender, you really had no plan in place. You put Dr. Haynes in, which then necessitated over the time having to hire people to do parts of his job. And that honestly does make sense to some, at some level, because, as I've said before, if the job he was hired to do and the job of superintendent could be done by one person, then there was never a reason to hire him. So obviously, the job had become to the point where you needed two separate people doing it. That was an okay decision in my mind for the very short period of time. But now what's happening is we're hiring people all over the place to make up for that. And I have to say, I have yet to see any real, real reason for removing Dr. Bender. And if you had reinstated her, as somebody else had said, and you put Dr. Haynes back in the position he was hired to do, we wouldn't be constantly finding people to take up the slack. That's number one. Then you come to the busing. The children of this district should be able to wait at that bus stop and know a bus is picking them up. And yet, whatever transpired enough where it was felt deemed to remove the person that was head of busing, but you had no plan in place. Who was going to pick up that job before you let him go? Or somehow know that you were gonna be able to transition this smoothly. So again, it's the planning. You need to look at the bigger picture. You need to look at, when I do A, how am I gonna fix it or counter it so that B, C, and D follow and not Q all of a sudden out there? That's number one. Okay, number two, middle school, high school. It's come to my attention that now the middle school, well, we can't call them middle school anymore because that's not what we have here. Our seventh and eighth graders are now no longer entering from their separate entry, but they're now coming in with nine through twelve. Um, I don't know how many of you aware of it, but I saw a video of fights between seventh and eighth that took a while to be broken up the first week of school. So I have a lot of concerns over how this transition to this one big happy family is really going on down here. Seventh and eighth graders need to be treated as seventh and eighth graders, not nine through twelve. And I have so far not seen anything that's showing me that any real plan is in place. And yes, we could be presented with these wonderful presentations and all the flowery words, but in the end, that's all it is. There's no substance to what I'm seeing. And again, that bothers me because the kids of this district deserve more, and they were getting more. And if nothing else, then the programs that were already started should have been maintained. Then I heard tonight about the inner courtyard. I came down here, I think it was, I don't remember, it was last year or the year, no, it had to be last year, um, because we were having our swap-in shop. And I came down to find out from Ms. Demon, because she had told me she identified families that were in need, and we were gonna make quiet arrangements so they could come down and they could take what they needed, clothing, household materials, et cetera. And while we had a few minutes, she took me on a tour of that area. And that was during, just when we were coming back, I guess, from the pandemic, and we wanted to have the kids out in the open air. And the kids were starting to work on a plan for redoing that. I guess that fell by the wayside too, now that we're bringing somebody in to do it. Wouldn't it be nice if the kids were a part of that, even if it was seventh and eighth graders? So I know my time is up, but some things to think about.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf, for your thoughts.
Thomas Blumenthal.
Wayne Demakoff did a superlative job of managing the finances, detailing what had to be done, what could not be done, and doing it in a way that was cooperative with the board. Unfortunately, Little Ferry has Paul Solow. So, in a typical New Jersey method, he's being shifted out of here. He's being shifted out of here for doing his job, and that's very, very unfortunate. With regard to Little Ferry, I would like Kerry to advise exactly what's being done to collect our million-two from Little Ferry that's been hanging there and hanging there and hanging there because Little Ferry doesn't want to pay. This is a court order, and there is no reason not to garnish the Little Ferry accounts. And I would like to know what is being done to collect our money. If you're afraid to answer, you're afraid to answer, then we need a new attorney.
I'm never afraid to answer any question, Mr. Blumenthal, but I, I don't report to you. Uh, the board is my client, so if Mr. Fernandez would like me to answer that, I'm happy to address that question, but it's up to the president.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. You can address.
My question is, what is being done to collect the money from Little Ferry?
Sure. As I, I believe I have reported publicly previously, the board has authorized litigation, which is currently pending. There is a petition pending before the Commissioner of Education, which has been sent to the Office of Administrative Law. We are currently in the process of litigating that matter before the Office of Administrative Law. Judge Stokes is handling that case. Um, we, we have, we have not had a hearing yet, and we are waiting, uh, for the opportunity to file a motion for summary judgment, which we've been granted the authority by Judge Stokes to do.
Would you agree that the amount of money has been fixed for a very long time?
The amount of money for the eighteen-nineteen school year? Uh, yes.
And the reason that it's taken this long to collect the money and when you expect it would be possible to collect the money?
So the process has to be filed, followed, that we reached out to Little Ferry, Little Ferry objected. Um, we filed a petition with the Commissioner of Education. I, I want to be clear, there is no court order related, or commissioner order, related to the eighteen-nineteen school year. The, um, order that was issued was for a different year.
Do you agree that they owe us over a million dollars?
Yes, or I wouldn't have filed the petition.
And what's your anticipated scheduling to, where we get to the point where for eighteen-nineteen, there's an actual judgment?
Uh, well, I, a long time ago, tried to stop, um, guessing as to when judges will issue decisions, uh, as you know. Um, I do expect that we will we will, we, I expect that we will be filing within the next thirty days a motion for summary decision, uh, which then Little Ferry has the opportunity to respond to. We have the opportunity to file a reply. Imagine by the end of this current calendar year, we will have perfected that motion. It will be before Judge Stokes. Judge Stokes should issue a decision within forty-five days, uh, but ALJs are permitted to get extensions from the Commissioner. Then after that point, whatever her decision is, it's just a recommendation to the Commissioner of Education, so it goes to the Commissioner. I don't expect a final decision from the Commissioner until sometime in twenty-twenty-three.
So you feel that there is no effective way of collecting this money for at least six months or a year or more?
We are currently engaged in the only effective way, um, to cover these monies on behalf of Ridgefield Park as the request was made to Little Ferry to make the payment, and they don't believe that they owe that money, so we are currently in litigation.
This is not the first time that that money's been reviewed at all. Is that correct?
So the money that we are requesting is related to the certified tuition numbers that were released for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
A long time ago.
They were issued. The process, the process takes a long time, so even though we're talking about the eighteen-nineteen school year, the process for certifying the tuition doesn't happen in that school year. You wait until the audit is complete, and then you get those numbers. So it's a three-year process that the Department of Education undertakes to get you the numbers for a year. So it's, there is always a lag of multiple years with the collection of tuitions, one way or another.
If the Commissioner of Education agrees with the findings, is it possible for Ridgefield Park to garnish Little Ferry accounts?
Um, I don't know what you would mean by garnishing their accounts. If you mean um, attempting to offset any monies that might be owed by Ridgefield Park to Little Ferry in a specific year, that is typically done.
But what if the money is not owed up to the level of what Little Ferry owes Ridgefield Park?
I'm not sure, though, what you mean by garnishing their accounts. You mean filing a judgment, um, with the court and trying to with the court and trying to collect directly from them? That's not typically, it's not, so that isn't typically needed when you're talking about two public entities.
Is that illegal?
No, we could go to the sheriff's office and try to record a lien on property owned by Little Ferry. It's a cumbersome process that doesn't typically result in anything in any and quickly. So typically, and I don't expect this, but the last time that Little Ferry owed Ridgefield Park money and there was a dispute over it, we went to the commissioner. And I want to acknowledge that Little Ferry, once that order was issued by the commissioner, Little Ferry paid those monies and paid them relatively quickly. So I don't expect that Little Ferry is going to refuse at the end of this litigation any more than I would expect that if Ridgefield Park isn't successful. If a petition were to be filed against Ridgefield Park, that Ridgefield Park would refuse. I expect them to, that they will pay that amount if the order is issued by the commissioner.
But do you expect the order to be issued?
I do, and I'm hopeful it will.
And then you think what period of time through the commissioner and actually getting paid?
I think it'll be sometime in twenty twenty-three. I'm really not capable of speculating with any more certainty than that because the commissioner doesn't always issue a decision within a certain time period.
Well, Commissioner's position is fairly temporary. Thank you.
You're welcome.
John Rafferty?
Good evening, Mr. Rafferty.
Mr. Bananas? I'm not about to let this Carrie Grabstein thing go because it's exactly what happens to anybody that dare challenge the boys' club. Just like our state monitor, gone. Controller, gone. Mr. Phytros, my apologies to you, sir. When Ms. Orth brought up the idea of auditing transportation, you strongly agreed that anything we spend that amount of money on should be audited and looked into, and that is absolutely correct. Where I am having a problem is this went on for a long time between transportation and Ms. Grabstein as to what was needed and what was provided. He refuses to answer me. So maybe you can ask Dr. Haynes if it was ever made clear to Mr. Kilmurray that he answers to Ms. Grabstein. If you understand what I am saying there.
Well, I'm a little confused because before you yelled at me for saying something to Ms. Grabstein, which I didn't do. You said something earlier, so I wasn't.
I apologize.
Okay. So you're asking me now, you want me to find out if Mr. Kilmurray knows if he reports to Mrs. Grabstein?
That is correct.
That's what you're asking?
That is correct.
But I don't run the day-to-day here in the district and I'm the liaison from Little Ferry, but I mean, I would like to think that.
It's, it's the same question. You and I are both asking the same question.
I, I didn't ask that question, I asked a different question, but you weren't in the room when I asked my question. But want me to ask the question? Is that what you want?
Please.
Dr. Haynes, does doctor, does Mr. Kilmurray know he reports to Mrs. Grabstein? I mean, is this where we're at?
Mrs. Wright, this is a personnel issue, correct?
I, I don't, I don't know that anyone on the board or in the administration can speak for any member of the staff and advise as to what they do or do not know.
I figured that'd be the answer, so I asked the question. We can move on.
Hello, hello, hello. Thank you, sir. If you understand my, my, my point is, and congratulations, Ms. Orth, I've heard the last three speakers use the word plan again. Plan. Plan. Okay, Ms. Grabstein was thrown to the wolves while Dr. Haynes sat there and watched. She had made it clear to you she was not being provided with the information she needed. And what have you done about it? Nothing. Nothing. And that's how our board works and that's why we have so many law cases. And that's why we're so screwed up. Because there is no structure and no plan. Transportation was written up under two thousand twenty audit for flushing time cards. Did the Board of Education do anything about that? Of course not. Yet you have a woman who dedicated herself to her job and providing people with information and doing the best she possibly could, and she's gone. We have a gentleman in, Mr. Demakoff, completely dedicated to restructuring the education system in Ridgefield Park and making it work. He recouped over four million dollars for us. You know what the board's answer to him is? You're gone.
Leslie Gottlieb?
Evening, Ms. Gottlieb. How are you?
Three things. Number one, I wish Mr. Demakoff well.
Please speak into the microphone.
I wish Mr. Demakoff well, but I thought the goal was to get rid of a monitor, period. If Newark and Patterson and Jersey City could get rid of their state control, I'm disappointed that Ridgefield Park could not get their act together enough to have the state say you don't need a monitor anymore. And that's all I'm going to say. Well, the second quest, second comment I have, I keep hearing references to Mrs. Grabstein walking out or being upset. Does that mean we don't have a BA or did she just walk out of a meeting? And the last thing I want to bring up and the original thing I wanted to speak about off agenda tonight, I knew nothing about Resolution thirteen oh four, about Mr. Kilmurray, about what was going on. I came to talk about some friends of mine whose kids, one was going to the academy, was going to applied tech, had no bus Monday morning. Another friend, there was no bus from the academy Monday afternoon or Tuesday afternoon. And of course, you know, Little Ferry pays for the trans, pays towards the transportation. So there was no communication, no coordination, kids were stranded. And again, as everybody has said in the last few minutes, no plan. I mean, you had your reasons for whatever you did because, but we won't know because the transportation audit is not public. The general audit that's done once a year is public, but this transportation audit needs to be made public. I don't see any reason why it isn't made public. I do think that you will unfortunately have lawsuit number four on your hands. I'm sure Mr. Kilmurray will talk to a lawyer. He has a right to, so you may have to be prepared for that, and that's all I'm going to say.
Ronald Hidalgo? Nope. Donna Duran? Late night.
Okay. Concerning, concerning Little Ferry involvement in the removal of Mr. Demakoff, here are some facts that were left out concerning Mr. Demakoff. He has not been present in the district since March twenty twenty. Yet he continued login thirty-two hours weekly with no one signing off his time sheets due to a tune of a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. If Mr. Scarafield had the power to get rid of Mr. Demakoff, then how come he can't get the money from the state to build a new school in Little Ferry? All Little Ferry wants is to be accepted here in RP. Most of all, appreciate the relationship, but there are dividers and we all know who they are. It's amazing that certain people have so much information about Little Ferry's baseless lawsuit that Mr. Demakoff has put forth. And yes, there are audience members in here tonight. Mr. Demakoff, Little Ferry Rep Phytros and Superintendent Scarafield have no influence on the courts when they decide how to resolve a lawsuit. This was not a ploy to get out of paying. If this board is so dissatisfied with Little Ferry, then the board should sever the send-receive relationship. They have the authority to do so with state approval. There is a trend, if Mr. Demakoff don't get his way, let's sue, just see if your teachers association. To the small group of followers, please become part of the solution, stop being part of the problem.
Thank you for your comments. Simone, do we have anybody to promote? Can we promote those three, please?
Hello? Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Good evening, Ms. How are you?
Good, how are you? Ramirez.
Ramirez, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, I get it all the time. Sharon Ramirez, two oh five over Pike Avenue. I just wanted to discuss the first week of school. I have three children that attend the Ritual Park Junior Senior High School. And my daughter right now is in seventh grade. I know I've been to many meetings speaking about my, how upset I've been about Mrs. Lehman being removed and that she's an integral part of that community. Day one of school was a disaster. And I was really hoping that with all the new people they were putting in to replace Mrs. Lehman with everything that was going on, that things would go smoothly. And it didn't. My daughter, midday on Genesis, had her schedule magically just changed. Her schedule went from one schedule to all different teachers midday for a seventh grader. I applaud my daughter and how she handled the situation. But then she was attending classes where teachers didn't even have her on the roster because this happened midday. Unfortunately, my daughter didn't tell me till later on in the day, so I couldn't address it till the next day. When it was addressed, and it was addressed quickly, so I will, I will give credit to guidance for, for handling it once I called. But their response to me was they were changing the schedules as information was coming to them. Which basically what they were saying was that these classes for my daughter were meant, were recommended by her teachers in Roosevelt. And I find that very hard to believe that on the first day of school, my daughter's sixth grade teachers decided to send in recommendations to the guidance counselor because as she said, as they happened, she did it. This would not have happened if Mrs. Lehman were there, one hundred percent, I am one hundred percent assured and knowing that this would not have happened, that if there were any schedule changes to be made, one, I would have been notified before it happened. I did not like the school's response either. I was very disgusted with their response, even though it was changed. That once I called, they said, well, Mr. Ramirez, you have to put it in writing that you don't want this schedule. And I said, well, that's funny because I didn't put it in writing that I wanted the schedule change. In fact, the first schedule was the one that her dad and I signed off of on Genesis back when she was in sixth grade. So that was really upsetting to me. So I did put in writing that no further schedule changes are to be made unless I am notified about it. My son, who is in eleventh grade, which I know this is high school, had a problem with his schedule that was immediately went through me, through his case manager, dealt with it immediately because we have somebody overseeing my son. My daughter, seventh grade, I know we're still in the beginning of school. Finding out that she walks in the same door as my ninth grader, my eleventh grader, really upsets me because this is not, this is not what was told us. We told that seventh and eighth grade would be separate from the high school. And they're not because we don't have a separate person in charge of them. We don't have somebody looking out for the youngest kids in that building, the most vulnerable kids in that building. It's really upsetting that what has happened over the last few weeks of school are things that we were promised were not going to happen. Mrs. Lehman needs to be back in that building. She needs to be back in charge of these kids. It is not fair. One, to the principal, Mrs. Cavins, because it is too much to handle, just like Dr. Haynes is talking about, too many jobs are going into his position. So now we're hiring a hundred thousand dollar job here, another hundred thousand job there to help him. Mrs. Cavins needs Mrs. Lehman back. She needs Mrs. Lehman back. Mrs. Lehman needs to be there for our seventh and eighth graders. The seventh and eighth graders need to be separate. We talk about social emotional learning. We talk about the.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Gillian Mark, three zero five Fifth Street.
Yes, good evening. How are you?
Good. Question, other than the pending legal suit with Little Ferry for the million dollars, is there any other outstanding balance they have? Like, are they current with all their other payments? Does anyone know? Yes, no, can Mr. Demakoff answer or Kerry, are they allowed to?
I don't know the answer to the question.
Okay. Mr. Demakoff, do you know if, if Little Ferry is current with all their other payments to the district other than the outstanding legal stuff?
My understanding is that when they're invoiced monthly, they're paying the required amount that's scheduled.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure. I just don't appreciate the previous Little Ferry person who just got up and with her thug-like attitude. And I feel that there's a lot of thug-like attitude from that district, not everyone from there. Just the administrators who come there and if we can cut ties, you know, maybe she's right, maybe we should. There's a lot of self-entitlement there and you know, and I do feel they had a lot to do with Mr. Demakoff leaving because there was a lot of bragging about it. And Mr. Demakoff has not flapped his gums and told us anything. It's the legal stuff for the million dollars is a known fact. So, you know, if she's so worried about the writing off eighteen thousand dollars and not about the million dollar suit, you know, I wish she was still in the room to hear this, but thank you very much. And Mr. Demakoff, you will be missed. You have been a great asset to this district. And I hope the person who replaces you is as diligent and tries to keep this board honest. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Simone, do we have anybody else to promote? That is it? So I take this time to close comments on off agenda items. Go on to move it, new business? Yeah, faculties and programs with trustee Rodriguez. Sorry about that.
So new business faculty and program ISO move sixteen oh one. Second.
Any questions or comments on new business faculty and program sixteen point oh one? Seeing none. Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
I'm an extension on sixteen oh one.
Thank you. Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Chris? Mr. Verselli? Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Finance and insurance. Trustee Gomes?
ISO move FI seventeen oh one to seventeen oh four.
I second. Any questions on new business finance and insurance seventeen point oh one to seventeen point oh four? Seeing none. Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Orff?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes. Moving on to personnel, trustee Gibbons?
ISO move eighteen oh one to eighteen oh three.
Second.
Any questions on new business personnel eighteen point oh one to eighteen point oh three? Eighteen point zero three.
I have a quick question on eighteen oh three, the moving of part-time bus drivers to full-time. How, how long do those contracts go? Are those yearly contracts?
We'll have to look into that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I, I have a question if you don't mind. I know in the past, the bus coordinator asked for full-time employees and we're told there was never any money. Did we get a grant? Did we find some new money? Want to answer?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Cathcart. No, we, we don't have an answer. I would have to look into that for you.
Please do.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Verselli?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Orff?
Yes.
President Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we move to a closed session for a personnel matter.
I second.
Okay, do we adjourn the public? Yeah.
No action will be taken. Carrie and Wayne, if we move into another room, can we just put you on phone, like call you?
Sure.
But, but how are you gonna do that when I'm on the Zoom here?
Right. Can't you clear the room and just stay there? And we stay on the way we are?
For, yeah.
I, I need to close this public session and send you a link to another meeting.
That's fine.
You need to advise the public if you're going to take action after the executive session and how long you anticipate being in executive session.
Fifteen minutes?
Yeah, fifteen minutes. I don't think that we are taking action when we come back.
Okay. No action to be taken when we come back.
Nancy, are we able to just log back into the same executive session that we had previously?
I need to check that. I'm checking it right now. If, if my link works, then yes.
Okay.
I'll get back to you.
I'm just gonna stay here then.
Mr. Cathcart, Mrs. Wright, Mr. Demikov, I will need to close this down in order to activate the other link. If it fails, I will email you immediately with a new link.
So, so what are we doing? Uh, gonna give us another link, Nancy? Or we go on with the old link for exec?
I'm going to attempt the old link, but I need to disconnect this one first.
Okay.
If the call does not work, I will reach out to you.
Okay.
Okay.